We are live.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's go into take a minute to let people file in if they're coming into the meeting. All right. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and in email to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on December 3, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall at 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on December 3, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting. And may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive or irrelevant. Okay. Council President Phil George, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Somebody moved my flag. All right, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, roll a couple, please. Mayor Burrell Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster. Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here, Joan.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. Stephanie.
Here.
Or Attorney Schmier. I see him. Or Administrator Holveer. Is the Borough Attorney on? I see his name.
His connection might not be well because he doesn't even show an icon for the mic. So he may be having trouble with this connection.
He might be having trouble. Okay.
He did just drop off too.
Okay, so you know, he, I do need him a little bit later in this meeting, so. Terry, do you want to try to buzz him and see if he's? You're muted.
I'm going to do that, but before I do that, I see I have, I believe, someone, I think Ellen or Barbara and her daughter are, I need to promote to panelist. So do you mind if I do that before we get into things? Roxanne, I see your hand raised. I'm going to promote you to panelist, which will put your video on. So just, I'll give you a second to prepare. And hopefully I did that. Let me see if it worked. Let's see. I see the Borough Attorney may have popped back on. All right, Roxanne, you're there. All right. Hi, great, that worked out. And now I don't think I need to call the Borough Attorney Mayor. I think he may be back.
It is fair.
There he is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council members, do you have any questions on the agenda? Yeah, okay. All right. And I have some wonderful honors tonight. With us this evening are, is Roxanne Levinston? And is Ellen here?
I think I see, and now I do see a Barbara in the audience. Let me.
And Lynn Sherman is in there also.
Okay.
And I see there we go. I see several Barbers. I'm gonna check. Roxanne, who am I promoting? I got Lynn, I got you, and Wayne also. Okay.
I'm waiting on him, yeah.
I see him now. I'm gonna bring him over.
Thanks, everybody.
And I see Ellen. There we go.
Yeah, promote Ellen.
There we go, then. VIP, alrighty. Hopefully, just give everybody a second to shuffle in and we'll be together in a moment. I thought I got it. Oh wait, Ellen, let me try you again.
It's Wayne.
There she's, I see Ellen's name there. Okay.
Okay, so she's here?
She's here. I don't know if she plans on putting video on, but she's showing up as a panelist now mayor, so I would get started.
Where's my picture?
I see you. I mean, hear you.
What can I do to get my?
You probably have an icon that says start, start video.
Oh, yes.
If you push it, we should be able to see you.
You're good.
There you are.
Yeah, she is. Okay. So it's not often that I have the rare opportunity to celebrate one of our longtime residents. And tonight, I'm delighted to share one of our treasures, Ellen Rebarber, with everyone here. For a special moment, as we honor her on a special birthday, her 90th birthday. So Ellen, once, once this meeting is over, we'll get you this proclamation.
Thank you.
But Ellen has done so much in our, for our community. I am going to read you the highlights of the proclamation. Not everything that's in here, or Ellen will be here for such a long time because you've done so much for our community. So whereas Ellen Rebarber, an icon of the Highland Park art scene, celebrated her 90th birthday on November 30. And whereas Ellen is a lifelong resident of Middlesex County, she was born in New Brunswick and raised in Piscataway, attended New Brunswick High School, and then Newark State Teachers College, which is now Kane University. Whereas Ellen, after obtaining her teaching certification, took a position as a teacher at the Irving Elementary School in Highland Park, initially teaching the first grade, then becoming the school's computer teacher. Ellen took delight in her work and taught there for 32 years, retiring in 1998. Whereas Ellen met her future husband Carl at a Rutgers Hill L dance in New Brunswick the night after Yom Kippur. They married in 1953 and raised three children who are with us tonight. Lynn, Ellen, and Carl settled in Highland Park, living, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble because I've got this cold thing going on, so excuse me. Ellen and Carl settled in Highland Park, living first at 315 South First Avenue and later at 202 South First Avenue. Whereas Ellen discovered a love for art early in life, making teacups for her dolls from mud she found by the Raritan River during walks with her dad when she was five years old. As a young adult, she took art classes with George Segal, which she described as an eye-opening part of her life, and with noted sculptor Rudolph Seata. Whereas Ellen also gained statewide acclaim for her artwork in sculpture and fused glass, winning many awards and achievements. Whereas Ellen savors spending time with her three children and their spouses. Lynn and Barry of New Brunswick, Wayne and Rochelle of Princeton, and Roxanne and Bruce of Bridgewater, and Ellen delights in her six adult grandchildren and her great-grandson. They are Adam, Sarah, and her husband Juan, and their son Mateo, Jasmine, Noah, Max, and Jack, as well as Mary Amda. Now, therefore I, Gail Burrell Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby extend best wishes of the borough to Ellen Rebarber on the occasion of her 90th birthday. May she continue to enjoy the rewards of family, friendship, artistic expression, and community for many years. And I will be signing your proclamation. Ellen, you are a treasure. I adore you. I've known you for so long. Not only were you my children's teacher, but you are such an important part of everything that happens in Highland Park. So thank you.
And thank you, everyone. It's been my delight to live here and to be surrounded with such wonderful, wonderful friends and family. And my heart is always in Highland Park. And I, to this day, receive cards and notes from former students, and it gives me great joy. So thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. We're so proud of you, Ma. We love you.
Thank you all.
Okay. We're going to move on now.
Mayor, just one moment. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you guys can either sign off, or I can move you back to the regular attending list, whatever you prefer. I'll just work through. But thank you. I just didn't want to be moving.
Thank you, Rebarber.
Bye.
Thank you, Roxanne. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Ellen.
Bye-bye. Love you.
Bye, Ma.
Okay.
I didn't have to do anything. That worked out. I was getting confused.
All right, well, I actually have another proclamation here tonight. This, this proclamation is for someone who is very important to everything that happens in Highland Park. It looks like this, and it has the name Joan Hollings on it. Sorry, don't be embarrassed. We're all so, so proud of everything that you've done for our community, Joan. I want to read this to you. Whereas all towns depend on the talents, experience, and insights of staff members to deliver a myriad of municipal services to residents and visitors, a small borough such as Highland Park relies on the commitment and customer service of its staff even more deeply. Whereas, as the Borough of Highland Park is especially grateful for the longevity and institutional knowledge of staff leaders who have served the town over an extended period of time. Whereas Borough Clerk Joan Hollings began her service in Highland Park in 1985 as the Secretary to the Borough Administrator, worked as clerk to the Planning and Zoning Boards, and Secretary to the Parking Authority, and was promoted in 2002 to the role of Deputy Borough Clerk. Whereas Joan Hollings assumed the role of Borough Clerk in 2005 and became the Borough Registrar in 2007, serving with great skill and discretion, working directly with members of the public on a daily basis, overseeing primary and general elections, and providing staff support to the Mayor and Borough Council for the past 16 years. Whereas Joan Hollings has served very capably and with dedication under the administrations of five mayors, Mayor Jim Polos, Mayor Merrill Frank, Mayor Steve Nolan, Mayor Gary Minkoff, and myself, Mayor Gail Burrell Mittler, and often demonstrated an uncanny ability to recall historic actions of all the administrations under which she served. Whereas, in her capacity of Borough Clerk, she has provided sage advice and historic reference based on New Jersey doctrine and Highland Park ordinances to all the mayors she served. Whereas Joan Hollings has announced her intention to start her well-deserved retirement in December of 2021, and will be serving as Borough Clerk at her last council meeting today on December 7. Now, therefore I, Gail Burrell Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, with the strong support of the entire Borough Council, do hereby extend best wishes to Joan for a long, healthy, happy, and prosperous retirement, and our appreciation to her for her remarkable term of service in Highland Park. Thank you, Joan. Terry, I think you have some, some additional information?
But there's more accolades, Joan, so much deserved. Reached out to some of the former mayors that you worked with to see if they had a few words they'd like to offer us, and they all wrote, most of them wrote me back immediately with some remarks that they would like me to read at this time. Mayor asked me to read in part to spare voice, so you have to put up with mine. So I'll go in chronological order of mayor, based on what I have in front of me. And for Merrill Frank, she writes, Joan is a dedicated public servant. She's a professional, always very serious about her work, doing it properly, and she with a long enough institutional history to know where everything was kept. Sorry, I did not read this, so I'm doing my best. She had her own way of doing things from a filing system, which I could never master, to her way of dealing with the public, and even the mayor and council. She could be a tough cookie. No one could get anything over on her, and they wouldn't dare. As I got to know her, though, I realized that beneath that exterior was a soft and sensitive woman. That was the Joan I grew to know and love over our 10 years together. I knew a woman who took great pride in her work, who was dependable, honest, trustworthy, and who cared deeply about the municipality and the people who lived there. Most importantly, though, she made it her business to remain above any of the political nonsense that can sometimes be a part of the day-to-day administration of the municipality. Joan grew up in Borough Hall, and her absence will be missed, but I have no doubt she will find a way to apply her talents in other ways, and I wish her all the best as she enters this next chapter of life. She deserves our utmost appreciation for all she has done to keep the municipality moving forward. Thank you, Joan, with love and admiration now. So that was a nice one. And I'll give you all these, so you have. Also, I have from former Mayor Steve Nolan. When I was sworn in as mayor in 2011, I had no idea of the ways that so many people worked together to make this such a great community. People who refer to Highland Park as, quote, "small" do not appreciate how hard our public servants and neighbors dedicate themselves to the quality of life here. Joan is one of those very special people who went out of her way to guide and counsel me on the best course forward in countless matters. She always knew the backstory of how situations came to be and all the people involved. I always could count on Joan's practical view of the world. If there is a problem, we should fix it, and her ability to laugh at the most challenging of situations. Her service to the Borough Council and Planning Board was exemplary and helped its members focus on their tasks. Thank you, Joan, for serving the people of this town so well. I wish you only the best in your retirement. And last but not least, I've got some words from Gary Minkoff. Dear Borough Clerk Hollings, it was my honor and privilege to have you as a key member of the Borough's leadership team during my years of the governing body, first as a council person and then as mayor. While the cliche says no one is indispensable, this borough will, in my opinion, suffer a great loss of the wisdom and expertise you brought to your office during your decades of distinguished service. But those precious attributes will leave you, but your legacy will endure. And what is that legacy? Here's a partial list of the many gifts you've given us: your purest dedication, professionalism, and responsiveness; your grace, dignity, and ability to perform flawlessly under pressure, and you've had plenty of it, and to serve as a model to anyone in public service. Your work ethic sets a standard that would exhaust mere mortals. And though, and through all of the challenges, I've seen a person who managed to maintain a sense of perspective, good cheer, even when circumstances would have logically dictated anything but a positive outlook. To me, you'll always be a part of Highland Park, and we are better for the countless hours you have devoted to us. On my own behalf, and on behalf of those who served with me, who otherwise may not have had a separate opportunity to do so, I offer our sincerest thanks that you chose to invest in a career of service to Highland Park, and please know how much you are appreciated and will be missed. While I'm sad to see you go, I'm happy that you can move forward to the next exciting and well-deserved chapter of your life. I hope you and your family enjoy a long, healthy, happy, and peaceful retirement. You've earned it.
All right. And at this point, I'd like to ask any council person who would like to say a couple of words to Joan, to raise their hand, and I will call on you. Okay, I'm going to start with Council President Phil George.
Joan, I was hoping you would last just another month so that I could celebrate 20 years since I was first scolded for you the first day I was appointed as prosecutor. And you yelled at me for using the fishbowl to talk to people. But in the, in the 20 years that we've known each other, I always thought you were in charge of everything. I didn't realize you didn't become clerk till so much longer after because I could see you moving things along and with direct answers and with direct questions when you needed to ask those questions. And I frequently have to rely on you for information. I know I can always go to you, get straight-up information. I admire the way, there have been some days that have been tough, and days that were, you're overloaded, we're all overloaded. And you get the work done, and you don't worry about the overload. Your dedication to the job has been spoken to by the former mayors. I just want to say that in those 20 years, it's always been my consistent experience every time that you have the best interests of our town at heart, that you made a culture of getting the job done, to some extent, discipline in getting that done, and seeing that things got done right. I've enjoyed lecturing to the Clerks Association for you over the years. And I can just say that I hope that you enjoy your retirement. It's well-deserved. But I hope that we also, some of it rubs off, and it's stuck to the walls, and it's in the air we breathe, and that we continue to do what you've taught us all to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tara, did you want to say something?
Yes. I first met you, Joan, when you actually, I issued my marriage license 14 years ago. And over that time, you've done a lot of notary for me, and then we worked the polls. And when you had me come on as a poll worker, you've, you taught me so much there. But then, when I came on council, I could not have done the job that I've done without your input and you explaining different things to me. You were a perfect mentor. Highland Park is losing a great treasure. You've really worked hard over the years for all of our residents. And I'm very happy that you're going to get to retire, but I'm very sad for us. And thank you very much for all you've done for me and for our town.
Thank you. Best of luck. Councilman Hale, did you want to say something?
Sure, I, Joan, there's so many things that we could say about your tenure. I just want you to know that, that I'm very excited for your retirement, because as soon as you retire, I'm going to introduce legislation, a resolution banning the discussion of the New York Yankees within Borough Hall. So I just wanted you to know that I appreciate you retiring so that we can move ahead with that sort of.
I don't think you'll get past the mayor. Second.
So that's exactly my point, is that when somebody proposes something silly, Joan is right there to say, no, let's do it. And that's something you've been doing for 20 years, and you're, and for however long you've been there, for longer than 20 years. But you always keep us on the right track. You always put us in our place whenever we go off on some crazy tangent about the Yankees or anything like that. So, you know, I have learned so much from you in terms of the equanimity with which you meet things. It's the, it's the calmness. When, when things are going crazy, you are the calm in the storm. And I have to be honest, I tell that story, and I tell that description of you to my students who have an exercise where they go out and they talk to county clerks in the, in the public administration program. And they always come back, and they always say, I got yelled at by somebody. And I said, well, you come to Highland Park. So, so anyway, Joan, I really do appreciate everything that you've done for the borough. You are a direct, honest, straight shooter, as anybody I've ever met. You keep us within the lines, but you're often the one who explains where those lines are. You've dedicated yourself to Highland Park, and we are a better, better borough because of you. So thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, I see your hand up.
Yes, it is. Thank you. And thank you, Joan, for all of your years in guiding Highland Park. I remember when I first joined council, and I was like still trying to learn. Every time you would send out the agenda, and I didn't realize I needed to send what I wanted to add before I would send it, reply back to you, can you add that? You're like, next month. And also, you were saying, if you want to stay out of trouble, just send everything to me, any communication. So I learned that over the time. And really, you having knowledge and information at your fingertips, we will really miss that. And I really hope you enjoy your retirement as well deserved. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Hirsch, I think I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Joan. I'm going to be crashing the dais pretty soon. I'm 20 feet away. And it's really nice to have you here in person for a meeting, because we really, really miss seeing you and working together and just kind of being in person. But that being said, I mean, I know that this is something that you have been thinking about for a long time, and I know how resolute you and your husband are. And like, like we said before the meeting, you guys are going to have such a great time. And I'm sure Highland Park will become a fond memory for, for you after, after those initial days of transition. And I just wanted to say, you know, as a, I was, you know, when I, getting into public service, which is what, which is what you do, I, and I know that as a former reporter, the, the people that you have to create relationships with, strong relationships are municipal staff, because you are, you are what makes things tick. You are the frontline of defense for, for, for residents that come in looking for resources that the borough provides, kind of the fruit of the decisions that we make. But not only that, just the implementation, the stuff that, you know, isn't always reflected in a yay or nay vote. So that is, you know, we know how hard that you have worked and how much that you have given to the people of Highland Park over the years. And I just hope that that never gets lost on you, because it certainly won't get lost on us. Your legacy here is lasting, and we do have to get some HPTV documentaries done. And also, and also, you know, do you remember The Matrix, when they, when, when, when they insert the, 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 the memory twice, just to kind of sap all the information that, that, that you were holding? I think, I think we need that. I know that you'll be here for us, though, and I know that, you know, you'll, you'll be available to answer kind of many questions. I've really enjoyed working with you over the years. You have never said no, but I think, Matt, I think, I think Councilman Hale is spot on, is that you've kind of shown us where the lines are, which is really important from a governance standpoint. That's, that's really reflective of good government and something that you obviously hold dear and cherish. So thank you for all that you've given, and see you soon.
Thank you. Counselor, Mr. Schmier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Joni, I've had the privilege of serving as a municipal attorney now for about 43 years. And I must say that, and I mean this unequivocally, that you are about the most professional and the best organized municipal clerk I've ever had the privilege to work with. You really, you really set the standard. And, and I really appreciate the time I've had to work with you over the last number of years. The only thing I would ask of you is, as you leave this month, if you would leave us your address and. if you would leave us your address in Florida so that we can come and visit in February, we would all appreciate it.
Thank you. And, and for those of you who, who don't know, every one of us, when we first became council people, we were educated on borough operations, ordinances, what we're supposed to do, what we're not supposed to do by Joan Hollings. She, she prepared, we, we all have loose leaves, black loose leaves filled with rules and regulations. And she personally sat with each one of us to review all of that. So we all have so much we owe you Joan. And, and I hope that you'll be able to take the next several months and years, just for yourself and your husband. Okay, we're gonna move on now. All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular work session meeting held September 14th, 2021, October 5th, 2021, October 19th, 2021, and November 9th, 2021, as distributed. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to our council reports now and I am going to go in the order in which you appear on my screen. But before I call on council members, because Councilwoman Foster is not well and couldn't be here, I've asked the police chief to give the public safety report for us, for, for the police department. So Chief, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, three quick things. First, we're still looking for one more crossing guard. If anybody'd like to apply for this opportunity, please contact our headquarters. Ask for Sergeant Dave Soden and he'll help you through the process. We need one more crossing guard. It's a great way to help the community and earn a little bit of money. We'd love to have you. Second, we're experiencing a rash of burglaries via open and unlocked doors. So please make sure you lock your doors, use your alarms, turn your motion sensor lights on. We're having power tools taken from unlocked garages, electronics taken from unlocked houses on the first floor. So make sure you lock up, remove any sensitive items away from windows at night. If anyone has any security or Ring camera type footage of possible suspects or live in the area where these have been occurring, and talk to your neighbors, please contact the police department or detective bureau. I'd love to speak to you and take a look at that security footage. And finally, package thefts are on the rise. It's a season when everybody's ordering through Amazon and packages upon packages are arriving on people's doorsteps. Please take precautions to make sure your packages are safe. There's different methods you can use. You can have them delivered to a hub. I think Safe Drugs, you can have packages delivered there through UPS. There's other stores in town that'll do FedEx or Amazon and you pick them up there where there's somebody, you can ask for a signature so they won't deliver them and just leave them on your porch. For a signature, or maybe contact a neighbor or ask somebody in your neighborhood who's around during the day to scoop up your packages when they arrive. The, the, the shipping companies make it pretty easy now. You get a text when the package is three or four doors away. And it's easy to plan for this kind of stuff now as we go on. So protect your packages, make sure your stuff gets to you and, and not to somebody else. And that's it.
Okay, thank you too. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
No, not a report. I do have a, a item on the work session tonight. If anyone want to stick around the revow, that will probably be the most of my report for tonight. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Canavera, do you have a report?
I do. The Highland Park Human Relations Commission will hold an interfaith memorial service on Friday, December 10th at 10:00 AM in the Highland Park Community Center parking lot. This is to commemorate the victims of the December 10th, 2019 attack by two assailants at the J.C. Kosher supermarket in Jersey City, leaving four innocent victims dead and others injured. This is also a time to remember that the Jewish community continues to be attacked. As reported by the Anti-Difamation League, New Jersey has the second highest rates of antisemitic incidents in 2020. We all need to be vigilant, protect our residents and our town. The Board of Health, please remember that COVID cases are rising in New Jersey. Please get vaccinated or get your booster. They would also like to remind everyone that e-cigarettes are just as dangerous as smoking. For help on quitting, go to the website www njquitline.org. As always, the Food Pantry and Gives a Hoot are serving over 300 families each month. If you'd like to donate, you can donate to the Food Pantry through their Amazon wishlist or Gives a Hoot through their, by sending a check to Borough Hall with a memo that it's for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. The Mental Health Commission would like to remind everybody to please check on your neighbors, especially the elderly ones. And remember, if you need help, please reach out. Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare Hotline is Raritan Bay Medical Center hotline is 732-442-3794. Or you can text HOME, H-O-M-E, to 741-741 to reach a crisis counselor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hale, did you have a report?
You, Madam Mayor, thank you. A couple of things. As many people know, we're moving ahead with the implementation of the Neighborhood Preservation Program Grant that we've gotten. To date, we have received over 350 responses to our community-wide survey about Woodbridge Avenue and its future. I want to, this survey was designed by the state DCA and it's being implemented in all of the neighborhood Preservation Program towns across the state. The goal of the, the survey is to provide baseline information about where people are, are, are interested in, in, in each particular town. But the state is also using it to be able to compare towns. So it's a requirement of the grant. But what's not a requirement is, is the number of people that are, are returning this. In most places, it's about 100. But in Highland Park, we're, as I said, over 300. We participate, but continue, please to participate. It always looks fantastic to DCA when we have high participation rates on surveys like this. So if you haven't participated yet, you haven't done the survey, there's a link at the Borough website. If you go to the website and, and search for Neighborhood Preservation Program, it pops up to the NPP page. And you can, can fill out there. There's also flyers around town with a QR code that you can access it immediately. So if you haven't done it, please do fill that out. We're having a number of stakeholder meetings of, of people, of business owners and people who live in and around Woodbridge Avenue that are coming up tomorrow night, Wednesday, December 8th, from 7 to 9 is specifically for people who own businesses along Woodbridge Avenue. If you do own a business on Woodbridge Avenue and you'd like to join this, it's tomorrow, December 8th, from 7 to 9. And then we're having two resident meetings for people who, who are in the neighborhood of Woodbridge Avenue. One in the, in the daytime, Wednesday, December 15th, from 1 to 3 PM. And then Thursday, December 16th, from 7 to 9 PM, to try and get people who have different shift work and, and, and stuff like that. Again, if you go to the Borough website, there's a place to sign up for, on the NPP page for any of those events. And you can also email Emma Van Thun at E V O N T H U N at HPborough.com. If you are interested in attending any of those meetings. We're trying to get as much input and feedback from people who live there and work there and who own businesses along Woodbridge Avenue. As well as all of Highland Park. So again, check the website for MPP. So, uh, other than that, as, as the year is winding down, you might think that Main Street Highland Park is also winding down, but you would be very wrong. Main Street Highland Park has a number of events coming up towards the end of the year. December 11th is the Night Owl Market from 4 to 8 PM. Also on December 11th, Pinos is hosting a punk rock flea market during the day. So there's lots of cool opportunities to shop for all your flea and punk rock needs in Highland Park. So please, uh, uh, take advantage of those. Also, the farmer's market is two more events this Friday, December 10th, and next Friday, December 17th. So again, please come to those to, to stock up on your farmer's markets goodness for the long winter. So with, with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And Joan, I'll try to keep this short. We received, uh, a, the lights are off. Here we go. See, we're saving energy here. I have to stay animated. I'm surprised my, I'm some, Councilman Hale, I'm surprised my scarf that I picked up from the night market is not, uh, is not private enough to keep the lights on here, but go figure. The, uh, we received a really terrific letter from a number of parents with young children. A letter that I could have easily signed as a parent of young children. And it expressed concern about the limited recreational programming in, in Highland Park for, for, for young children. And this is in line with efforts that we have made working with the community, working with the Department of Rec, working with the Department of Public Works on improving our pocket park space as well, while our county parks, Johnson and Donaldson are semi out of commission. The concerns reflected in this letter, I think, were important. And I just wanted to emphasize the fact that to, and to any of the parents watching, that your advocacy really, really helps because we are moving forward with additional programming and we are moving forward with improvements, temporary and then short-term and long-term improvements to our municipal parks, which we are going to have to invest more in, you know, in the future years. One of the things that, um, one of the things that the letter said, you know, asked was were some of the reasons for the limited programming. And simply put, you know, it's, uh, Kim McGraw and Kimberly McGraw at the rec center who do a terrific job are in somewhat of a time of transition doing a top to bottom assessment of programming and of their spatial and, and programmatic expectations as far as kind of growing, growing those as well. When there was one area that was at least sidelined and that was youth basketball, indoor basketball. And that raised a lot of concerns from, from parents and rightfully so. So I just wanted to go over a few things. This is going to be evolving over, you know, over the next few days and weeks. But I did want to go over a few things that parents can, can expect to see in the coming, in the coming days and weeks. And just keep in mind that youth basketball would have started in January. So that would not have begun yet. But what we can expect to see though, and these are confirmed and they are posted on, on, on the Department of Recreation's website, that's Highland Park Rec, R-E-C dot com, HighlandParkRec.com. So please check it out and please look for updates as well. We will be starting Winter Track Sundays for third through eighth graders. This program will focus on speed, agility and running form. And it, the program is coached, is, is run by Coach Farmer from the Highland Park Middle School team. This, this will be five sessions starting in January and will take place at the municipal complex. Preschool STEM with the library and there's, that, and that'll be Wednesdays from two to three. This is for three to five-year-olds. And joining the Highland Park Library's Youth Services Librarian for preschool STEM activities and stories for children ages three to five years old. This also begins in January and will be held on Wednesdays at, at the Highland Park Community Center. Park parties. So this really grew out of an effort from communication with a number of parents that, that, that we've reached out, that, that reached out to us, I'm sorry, that reached out to us out of concern for the limited park space. And working with Kimberly McGraw at the rec department, I think this is a really exciting use and hopefully kind of institutionalizes long-term use and investment of our pocket parks. And when I say pocket parks, I mean specifically the Felton Avenue Tot Lot, Malamud Graff Park, otherwise known as Carcie Park, and as, as well as activities in any number of, of our school playgrounds as well. The playground at the municipal complex and as well as Bartle and Irving and Mearon Tucks with the school district on sharing those spaces as well. But the park parties though spotlight the pocket parks in town. And, 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 and hopefully will illustrate that they're worthy of, 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 of some reinvestment. You know, some of the equipment there needs a little bit of love. Some of the surfings, surfacing there needs a little bit of love. I would love to see more tables, more lighting. Something that, you know, really fits into the neighborhood and something that we can really be proud of. Because it's, it's a really quality of life issue. And we've talked about pocket parks here, you know, before. So we're gonna have mini events at these parks to encourage outdoor play and create a safe social environment targeted for children between the ages of three and five. Stay tuned for that, but look for scavenger hunts, glow-in-the-dark music party, kid time, chalk jumper open games and kid time kickball. And these will all take place beginning in January. This is free. Registration is preferred. So again, go to HighlandParkRec.com to register. The youth basketball clinic will be starting in March. Details will be posted shortly. So, so if you've written about the lack of basketball, please, uh, please stay tuned, write back with any questions. And, 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 and this will be posted prominently on the borough's website as well as the Department of Rec's website and their social media channels. Other programs coming, the Theater Actor Studio, that's virtual, that starts in January. Indoor, adult indoor soccer Sundays, men's basketball Wednesdays, women's basketball Tuesdays, adult volleyball on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And then just coming soon, Joan, I'm sorry, this is a long. Coming soon. And again, please stay tuned for details. We're gonna have nature explorers at Donaldson Park for, for, for ages, for, for grades third through eighth, soccer on the turf, music programming, reading with Daisy, that's a partnership with the library, and pickup games at the park. And that's going to be a partnership with the teen center. And so there is a lot going on. Thank you, parents, for, 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 for your patience and your encouragement and your advocacy. Again, you know, I got this letter and I am friends with most of the people who've signed this. So I'm in the same boat too. And, you know, it's really important that we are able to provide alternate, alternate forms of recreation during times when logistics can be difficult right now. I did just want to add one thing to the, the rec department as well as the mayor went on a field trip to the Piscataway, the, the new Piscataway Rec, Recreational Center. And we are looking into, and maybe, maybe Mary, you can, if you want to speak more on this in your report, or if you have more to add. But we are looking to partner with Piscataway on programming and hopefully get in-town rates as well, which would be, and in-town rates and transportation options as well. So that would be a real added bonus while, you know, while we are limited spatially indoors. And just wanted to add that on Thursday, this Thursday, there is a Highland Park Arts Commission meeting that'll be held at Pinos at 6:00 PM. Please come and please stay for Mr. Pete Horvath. Pete, I know you're not watching, but I am saying your name because you will be playing your famous 40 songs set. So come for the arts, stay for the music. And Joan, I just wanted, I left something out when, when, when we gave our tributes to you. I miss seeing you write in shorthand in the fishbowl at the meetings. As a reporter, I was always really jealous that you could write real shorthand. That was pretty awesome. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, I have a report. With regard to DPW, we are currently doing leaf pickups on Wednesdays for leaf removal. Leave your bags at the front. But when the crews have But when the crews have extra time after trash or recycling, they will be continuing to do pickups even if it's not Wednesday. But the main day is for Wednesday. You'll see on the agenda for tonight, we have a resolution to allow us to purchase a new street sweeper. It may not sound like much, but the current ones, the big tall one that goes way up in the air and doesn't sweep up much, is way past its lifetime. The new one that we got is not the same kind. The new one that we're going for is actually a truck type that's drivable on the streets. We, for maintenance or supply, we don't have to truck it out or transport it. It should be a lot more reliable. And Mike from DPW tells me that this is a preferred new type of street sweeper and looking forward to that helping us not only with the general cleanup, but with also cleaning out the storm sewer vents that get clogged with leaves and other debris. It's much more suitable for doing that. I've been meeting with the superintendent of DPW. We're going over the budget for 2022. And finally, the Public Works meeting next week will be reviewing the final edited, complete draft of the snow report was completed several months ago. I'd like to thank Councilman Hirsch and Councilwoman Canavera for all the work that they put into it. The final, final edited, corrected, supplemented and annotated version was completed last month. And it's on our agenda to recommend forward to the council as a working document for its review. Finally, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is delivered a report at the last meeting and we'll have a follow up at their meeting tomorrow night, which is at seven thirty. And the link is on the Borough website. Doing their own reorganization study to try and be more efficient and liaison better with Public Works for tree replacement as well as sustainable Highland Park. They're doing the site inspections where street trees that have been planted in the last couple of years may have failed and creating the inventory for the 2022 planting schedule. I'd like to congratulate Dr. McDermott, Melanie McDermott, who's the new chair. There was a co-chair. Melanie is now the chair of the staff. Environmental Commission is undergoing a review of a lot of the commentary that's been coming in from the Borough on the leaf blower ordinance to control the noise and also carbon emissions from leaf blowers. They had some excellent suggestions going forward. They're actually performing their own study and research to bring forward to the council. And they've decided to take it appropriately. It's step by step, in addition to looking at ordinances that other towns are doing, they're doing their own independent research. They may actually be going out to a number of the lawn services that service the Highland Park area for their suggestions and thoughts on possible control, not only as to noise, but as to electric powered leaf blowers. Sustainable Highland Park. Want to wish Alan Williams the best. Alan Williams was an original founding member of Sustainable Highland Park many years ago. He is stepping down from Sustainable Highland Park. This meeting in December will be his last meeting and I wish him very well. We will miss him. He's been part and parcel, probably I would call him one of two or maybe three of the constant moving the heart of Sustainable Highland Park, which has done extremely well and set an example for other sustainable programs in other areas and gotten us at least our silver certifications for many years. And that's my report for right now.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I just had one item I'd like to report on, Mayor. I just, it's getting cold and I've gotten the question a few times regarding our Code Blue shelter situation. We're following a very similar program to what we did last year in partnership with the Reformed Church of Highland Park. We have stacked a, basically an apartment that we're using, a borough owned property. It is not a walk in shelter. This is by appointment, but in order, if anybody's in need or if anybody sees someone in need, they can call our non emergency line, seven three two five seven two thirty eight hundred. And assuming there's space available, we will accommodate. The next, I believe, three evenings have been called as Code Blue emergency shelters. So I just want to make sure the residents know of the resource, that it is available. And from what I understand, we've already had a few folks utilize it already this season. So if any other questions, can reach out to me.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
A no report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. I'm sure you've all been following what's been going on with COVID-19 in the state, in the country, in the world. I just want to give you an update on our county and Highland Park in particular. Statewide, there have been sixty eight percent of the population has received both doses and ten percent have at least started with one dose. In the county, ninety two percent of our population has received at least one dose. In Highland Park, children aged five and up to five till twelve have seventy five percent have had their vaccinations completed and another twelve percent have had them started. Children twelve to seventeen have eighty three percent have completed their vaccinations and another ten percent have started them. And for eighteen years and up, eighty two percent have completed their doses and ten percent have at least started them. In Highland Park, over the last twenty four hours, there have been nine new cases reported. That is something I want us all to think about. We know that there have been family gatherings. We, I just, you know, it's, I know it's been going on forever. But I urge all of our residents to please be cautious. Wear masks indoors, still stays six feet apart when you are indoors. And please, let's not give up on the protocols we've been following. Everyone's been so good over these last couple of years and we're all very tired of this. But the last thing we want to do is see our municipality start once again seeing increases like nine cases in twenty four hours happening again. So please continue to be cautious. Councilwoman Canavera mentioned the December tenth vigil in memory of those who lost their lives in the Jersey City shooting on December tenth. I just want to add to what she mentioned. Mayor Steve Philip, the mayor of Jersey City, will be joining us at this vigil. So if you can make it, I think it will be tremendously important for our community. Excuse me. Several people have been writing me about the ongoing traffic incidents that tend to occur on Raritan and Fourth Avenue. I just want everyone to know that the police chief and the police department have been working with the DOT and they have resolved some of the issues and will be addressing the left turns from North Fourth Avenue onto Raritan. Chief, I don't know if you're still on this call.
I'm still here, Mayor.
Do you want to talk a little bit more to that?
Yeah, we reached out to DOT and we talked to them about specifically Fourth and Raritan, the intersection there and the left turns, that seems to be the most dangerous intersection we have in town. They agreed with our findings that there was an issue there and we started the ball rolling to make left turns from North Fourth onto Route twenty seven. So if you're coming from North Fourth, you can't make a left turn towards Edison. It'd be a twenty four seven, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week prohibition on that left turn. You can either make the right to go towards New Brunswick and go straight across to the south side only. Our hope is that that will be in place sooner rather than later with NJDOT. Sometimes things move at a glacial pace, but we are doing our best to stay on top of them and get that done quickly. In the meantime, we are looking at some plans that the previous chief had discussed with DOT for other intersections that really didn't go anywhere. And we are dusting those off, taking a look at them and seeing what's viable, what we can and can't do and trying to come up with solutions for the other ones. But our primary goal right now is to get North Fourth and Raritan set up to be a safer place for people to cross because that's a busy intersection with Rite Aid and stop and shop on the one side and people coming from the north side that are walking. So that's where we're at there. We're working on it almost daily in contact with my traffic unit and DOT.
Thank you, Chief. And then lastly, as Councilman Hirsch mentioned, we have been talking with Piscataway about a joint program allowing our residents to participate in this really amazing recreation center that they've built over there. There's gyms, there's lots of equipment, there's an indoor swimming pool, an outdoor swimming pool. It would be such a wonderful thing for our residents to be able to participate in the programs that they have there and use the facilities. So stay tuned. I'm hoping that in the not too distant future, we'll have some good news for all of our residents. Okay. We're going to move on now. This is our first public participation session. The total time allotted is twenty one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in the Zoom application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. And then Borough Administrator, I'll ask that you announce our first speaker.
Sure, Mayor, it looks like we have fourteen attendees and four hands raised at this time. The first one I see is Abby Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Abby Stern Cardinal. I live on Harper Street. This is related to your report, Mayor. So I'm assuming that counts as being on the agenda since it was your report. You said that there are nine cases in the last twenty four hours. This is an undercount. I know that for a fact. I'm wondering, what is the procedure for people who, actually, let me just say, I have several questions and comments and I'll go through all of them and then, just so I don't get cut off with time. So what is the procedure for people who take a home antigen test and test positive for COVID to be sure that their test is counted in the official numbers? And can this procedure be widely spread? Can the information about this procedure be widely spread throughout town so we have accurate information? We need to be sure that we are capturing accurate data so that policies can be implemented based on the correct numbers and not an undercount. In addition, I strongly feel that there needs to be more advertising, more information about boosters. They're now recommended by the FDA for everybody who is eighteen and older. We need to be working hard to spread the word on this, not just about initial vaccination. We can, we are somewhat stalled at this point with getting initial vaccination and convincing people, but we need to get people to get their boosters and there needs to be an increased effort in that as well. A couple more questions I have is why hasn't Highland Park implemented our own indoor mask mandate? I don't see any reason, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that places can go further than what is required. I don't know why we're not implementing our own indoor mask mandate. I see people all the time walking in stores without a mask. This is unnecessary. It is easy to wear a mask. It is not necessary to go in Rite Aid or the supermarket. You know, it's necessary to see our friends and family. It's not necessary to to not carry a mask with you. I'm also wondering, have vaccines been mandated for all of the Highland Park staff? Anyone employed by Highland Park? And if not, when do you plan to do this? When I refer to vaccines being mandated, I mean mandate with no testing opt out. There is no reason we need to have a test opt out. And is there any additional way that we can think about mandating vaccines in this town? Obviously, within the bounds of the obviously, within the bounds of what is allowed. But I think we need to be thinking about what we can do that goes further in this town to keep everybody safe and especially the people who cannot yet get vaccinated, who are the kids under five. We are not keeping this population safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. So you and I are on the same wavelength with all of those comments. As you probably know, particularly concerned about the people feeling that, I'm hearing from certain people that COVID is over. It's not. It's far from over. I do have a COVID nineteen task force, which is comprised of members of the Board of Health and medical professionals in town. We do meet. We were meeting once a week. We're now meeting once a month. And we do talk about all of these issues. They have been advising me all along. I'm happy to take up some of these comments with them, particularly about advertising for boosters, the indoor mask mandate. We that is something I think we need to reconsider. We do have, most of our stores in town do have signs in their windows requiring that people wear masks if they enter the stores. But not all of the stores have those signs. And I'm happy to take that up again with my COVID team. As far as mandates for the staff, I'm going to ask Terry to talk to what the current protocols are.
Do you want me to do that now? We have a, you have to show proof of vaccination or proof of twice weekly testing. That's our current policy.
So Abby, why don't you and I follow up within a week, after I've had a chance to talk to my COVID task force? Okay.
Next up is Peter Spool. State your name and address, please.
This is Peter Spool. I'm at one forty six Graham Street. So I want to thank Abby Stern Cardinal for her comments, but those were good. The masking is particularly important because of the upcoming spread of the Omicron variant. So even vaccinated people, even people with booster So even vaccinated people, even people with boosters can get sick. It's been shown. And in Stop and Shop, many people do not wear masks. I'd like to go now to the Resolution 1221-299, which is about letting RFPs for the redevelopment plan. I have three questions that I'd like an answer to. One is, all four tracks are mentioned early in that document and yet RFPs are requested for only tracks A, C, and D. That's the first question, why that is. Second question is, tracks A and C, to my knowledge, for property that's owned by the borough but not track D. How can and does it make sense to have an RFP for a piece of land that the borough doesn't own? That's the second question. Third question is, once proposals come back, how will residents be involved in giving input before a decision is made which proposal to accept and whether to accept any proposals? That's the third question. Please answer.
Okay, you had a lot packed in there, Peter. So the one thing I can quickly tell you is track B, that property is already owned by someone who has been working with the municipality on a redevelopment plan for that site. Terry, do you want to talk more to that?
Well, the, I guess I don't have a lot of detail to add beyond that, but basically they were already further along in their planning for that. They have not come in with any, they basically at the conceptual level, they're starting to meet with our various professionals prior to hopefully submitting something more concrete for us to consider.
Who are you? Are you saying so that that's going to be done independently?
That's on a separate track from the, which is why that's being excluded, not because we don't care what happens there.
And then Peter, as far as the RFP proposals and the process that would be followed there. First of all, you should be aware that any of the proposals would have to follow the redevelopment plan that was approved through several meetings of the council and redevelopment entity. And then I'm going to ask Ed Schmier, our Borough Attorney, to talk about the process that we go through after we select the developer that meets the criteria the best.
Well, the usual process for the award of an RFP is something that's done by the governing body. In other words, you advertise, you take a look at the responses, you discuss that with your redevelopment attorney, and then you would make a decision about which of the responders you would like to award the agreement to. You could also discuss this publicly when the redevelopment authority meets, when the council meets as the redevelopment agency. Or you could simply internally discuss it and then make a determination after the response to the RFP is received. In that respect, you should be guided by Mr. Baumann, who is the redevelopment attorney.
Thank you.
So will the borough be taking into account?
Hang on, Peter. I think Borough Clerk, did he exceed the three-minute time?
You're over four minutes now.
Okay, so Peter, if you have additional questions, I'd ask that you come back a little bit later. Councilman Hale, I think I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say that one of the things about the RFP that we've made sure that in there is there is a great deal of flexibility, whether it is a RFP for the, all three of the lots, one of the lots, a variety of lots. So there's a lot of different sort of moving parts about what comes into the RFP. And so I just wanted to make it clear that what comes back from the development community could be in many different forms. And I just want people to understand that it's not that what comes back is going to be built the next day. It's what comes back, goes through an entire process, planning process, the normal redevelopment process, and there could be multiple options that come back. So it's just the flexibility that we built into this RFP, I think, is an important thing for people to recognize.
Thank you. Terry, you raising your hand?
That's the ultimate flexibility. I wanted to make sure it was clear that if we're not satisfied with the proposals we get, we do not have to award. I mean, that's fundamental, but I know sometimes you think of a RFP or a bid as below is bidder or the highest value, whatever you want to look at it. But if we don't feel it's meeting the goals of what we set forth with our plan, we have the flexibility to not award on top of all the other options Matt mentioned.
Thank you. Okay, next question.
Looks like I have Carl Prey. Please state your name and address.
Hello?
Hello.
Mary Forsberg, 317 Dennison Street. You really didn't answer Peter Spool's question. To start with, track B is, has already pretty much been approved for, and you had to change the zoning for that in order to make four and five-story buildings and have no parking. That was not part of the master plan. And I think that's why it's not part of this RFP. I don't understand, and Peter asked the same question, and you really didn't answer it. How do you issue an RFP for private property? Jim Polos owns all of track D. How can you find a different developer? And if you decide to go with the Middlesex Improvement Authority, where Mr. Polos works, former Mayor Polos works, you will have a problem with conflict of interest, I think. I really, I, I don't know why you, I don't know why you were doing this. I don't understand what your whole issue is. I know that if you decide that a developer comes in for track D that doesn't want a parking garage, you will not accept that developer because you obviously really want to build a parking garage and no one in town wants a parking garage. I have talked to except you and the council. I have talked to a lot of people and people are appalled that you would think that a parking garage is an appropriate thing for Highland Park. The other thing is that you're talking about all the wonderful things that are going on in Highland Park and you really never talk about the library. The library, to me, is one of the greatest sources of useful programs. Every single week, they send out a list of programs for all kinds of children, for adults. They have programs online that you can listen to. You never, you never really give the library any support. You haven't ever fixed the roof in the library. The library is half-used for a town like Highland Park that thinks of itself as an intellectual town. The fact that we do not have a totally functioning library is just totally pathetic. The other, my other one, my other question that Peter sort of alluded to was, how do you issue an RFP for private property? Are you planning to use eminent domain to take Jim Polos's property to build a parking garage? Or are you thinking that you're going to use million dollars to buy his property? I think you're being very disingenuous about the process of the redevelopment in this town.
Thank you, Mary. And just to correct something you stated, Council President Phil George is the council's liaison to the library and he often reports on things that are going on at the library. So perhaps you've missed it in his previous reports. Okay, Terry, is there anyone else?
I do see a couple, couple more hands. Just looking at the time I had written down. We have to end at 8:28, so we have time for a couple more. Looks like phone number ending 4445. Oh, I suspect maybe Lois. Please state your name and address.
Hi. Hi, Lois, loving North Side Avenue. I would like to just quickly say happy birthday to Ellen Mee Barber. Many, many years, another 90 healthy, happy ones. You were alive during Pearl Harbor's bombing. Imagine that, walking history. And Joan, I wish you the best. I wish you much aloha. And you and I started in Borough Hall almost the same time when Rutgers Ecological Preserve was in danger. Many of us were there bothering you. I hope you write a book about all the secrets that goes on that you've seen in Borough Hall. Okay, also Consent Agenda 299. A request for proposal. What exactly, please tell us, has the borough replaced or repaired in this borough that the sewer floods will never again occur? How much money, another question, grant money, state money, have you gathered for repairs? Are they completed? Back in 2016, you did Ordinance 16-1921, promising us future state assistance related to infrastructure improvements. Where, when has that been done? You're putting the horse before the cart. And third question, has Middlesex County, I put in a request for information a few months, a month and a half ago, has Middlesex Water Company completed its April study that talked or had a contractor out checking all the sanitary and the systems, whatever systems? Where is that report? Thank you.
Okay, so there are ongoing sewer and water repairs being done by Middlesex Water on a regular basis. I don't have all the reports in front of me. I don't know if Council President Phil George or Borough Administrator Terry, you have some more information. So Terry.
Again, I did inquire because I do, I'm eagerly awaiting that report. Phil, I know you weren't at the last meeting, so I'm just letting you know as well. The contractor that did the TV inspection of the entire sewer system, the holdup is, it's quite a bit of linear footage that they did and they not only just say, here's what's going on, they actually put a value add in terms of recommendations and some beginnings of kind of prioritization. They're working, that's where they're working on, but I was told before the end of the year, we should have something to share. So, but then that's just the beginning of our capital plan for the sewer site.
Okay.
The mayor is just going to add into that. Terry, thank you. Terry did get the more full report at the last water sewer meeting, but I did catch up a little bit. I got the same information also. You noticed that we did get the jetting of the storm sewers. We did a lot of the town in that. Also, that our annual contract with Middlesex Water to manage our infrastructure, what we did by doing that is we also built in a certain amount of capital repairs that are done every year, which we never had done before unless it was an emergency or a water main break, and that's built in for 10 years up to a certain capacity. The Middlesex Water actually does the repairs as part of their contract where we don't have to worry about getting it done. That's freeing us to look at more at Infrastructure Water Quality Assessment Act and all of the other obligations that have been imposed upon us. In addition, we're cooperating with Middlesex to do one of the major projects that's been pretty much ordered by the DEP, which is one of our main emergency water main connections up on Woodbridge. We're getting that done, again, without taxpayer dollars. There's a lot more going on than there has been in years. And Terry and I and the mayor, along with John and Michael in our Middlesex Water project and with Mike and Frank at DPW, there's a lot going on with relation to infrastructure. Not only that we're ordered, but we finally have a coordinated program that's moving forward with some smart contracting and some smart dollar usage. We're getting an awful lot done.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, Terry, is it time or do we have time for anybody else?
We technically have two minutes. I do see one person who hasn't had an opportunity to speak. Would you like me to call on them?
Yes, why don't we do that?
All right. Dan Stern Cardinal, please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks. So first, I just want to say thank you for moving the redevelopment process forward. Anytime I see that on the agenda, that makes me happy. So thank you just keeping that ball rolling. Second, I want to just ask people not to characterize what the entire town thinks because I assure you all that there's a lot of diversity of opinion in this town, especially when it comes to what is being proposed for the different redevelopment plots. So the entire town does not agree on what should go in any one of those places. Lastly, and most importantly, I just want to echo what Abby said earlier, in particular, that testing every few days is not sufficient to prevent coronavirus spread, especially when we're in the middle of kind of a higher point like we are now and increasing. The solution is really that there needs to be a vaccine mandate to the extent that the borough can impose it. It's an issue that we can revisit it and we can discuss it, but if we're serious about it, that's really what needs to be done. There needs to be a vaccine mandate that testing cannot cover up the lack of vaccination. And the last thing is just that I want to make sure we get an answer to Abby's question of how do people report positive home tests? So those are included in the official statistics.
Dan, that's one of the questions I need to go to my COVID-19 task force with. They are the medical boots on the ground. So I, you know, once I have an answer from them, I'll be happy to report it out.
This concludes our first
Right, ma'am, ma'am.
Sorry.
Yes.
We did receive an electronic message late today with a request that it be read into the record. I'll be happy to do that. I'm writing about the RFP for the development of tracks A and D. Resolution 299, based on the foregoing, the RFP should be withdrawn. First objection is with respect to track D, according to the emails attached here too, you are aware, you were aware early in September 2001 that Jim Polos has a new tenant for the former Blue Horse Charlie Brown Restaurant. In the records obtained through the Oprah request, an email was sent to Councilmember Matt Hale informing him of this. Mr. Hale writes to Ms. Terry Gover, that the planning and planning consulting Constantine in disbelief that it is for a 10-year lease. This takes a restaurant building off the table for redevelopment for at least 10 years, assuming the tenant can sustain its business that long. Additionally, the parking lot that makes up the other part of track D is used exclusively by Polos's two restaurant tenants and his own business, Midlandic Properties, as evidenced by the signs at the entrance to the parking lot. Attorney Baumann wrote to Polos on October 7, 2021 and asked, Jim, as I think you know, the redevelopment plan has been adopted. Does it make sense for us to follow up on our prior conversations now? There's no record indicating any further communication with Jim Polos. So unless there is some secret deal that has been hidden from the public, track D is off the table for development. How can you issue an RFP to develop it when you know it's not available? And why is the borough spending tax dollars to develop private property even if it could be developed? There's also an issue of an easement to three property owners on Raritan, Ballard, Corbett, and ReBarber. It is my understanding that this easement runs from Dennison through Polos's property to the three properties on Raritan. The second issue is with track C. You adopted the findings of the planning board that concluded that the redevelopment plan for track C is inconsistent with the master plan, unless parking for the existing business entities and the RCHP was taken into consideration. And you have hired Level G to conduct a parking study to comply with this requirement. The RFP makes no mention of the parking requirement as it states, whereas the borough desires to issue an RFP for redevelopment property within Island Park, including all or a portion of all tracks A, C, and D in substantially the form on file with the Borough Clerk. Failure to include the parking requirement in the RFP also makes issuing the RFP invalid. And valid. Moreover, since the parking is essential, an element of the downtown, it is unlikely that any meaningful development can take place there. Lastly, there's an issue of a conflict of interest. Mary Forsberg brought this up most recently at the redevelopment entity meeting. I was given short shrift by Attorney Baumann, who said in his professional opinion that Matt Hurst's sibling relationship with Rebecca Hurst, who runs the Main Street Island Park, is not a conflict of interest. Mr. Baumann gave no explanation for his opinion and it was just a negative, unsupported conclusion. Conflicts of interest do not require direct financial benefit in your actions with respect to the redevelopment plan have created pitfalls of conflicts that could render redevelopment invalid. The conflict exists if, quote, "a direct or indirect financial or personal" The conflict exists if, quote, "a direct or indirect financial or personal involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair public officials' objectivity and independence of judgment." NJSA 48:9-22-5. A conflict of interest arises when a public official has an interest not shared in common with the other members of the public. It could include personal relationships, citing the case Wiskowski versus Rius. Supreme Court invalidated municipal redevelopment approvals because of a conflict of interest. Steve Greigs versus the Borough of Princeton, 3233, rather, New Jersey 207, 1960. Supreme Court invalidates blight determination because of conflict of interest. Nissata Lee versus the City of Garfield zoning board of adjustment. Supreme Court validates action of the zoning board because of a conflict. And although court rules usually require legal challenges to municipal action to be commenced within 45 days under Rule 4:69-6, court rules allow for the enlargement of time of this for a public interest, even years after municipal action occurs. See Rule 1:1-2. And the tri-state ship repair case. Based on the foregoing, the RFP cannot be supported. It should be withdrawn, respectfully submitted, Mark Levis-Kine. End of message.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to.
I think Phil has his hand up.
I'm sorry?
I think Phil has his hand up.
Okay, Phil. You're muted, Phil.
We give members of the public three minutes. They make an effort to speak within their time. I just timed that email. It was five minutes long, just 10 seconds short of five minutes. I requested members of the public try not to use the email procedure, which is only applicable during Zoom meetings. It will not be applicable once we resume our in-person meetings, whenever that may be, to try and limit that to three minutes in fairness to everyone. I would certainly, I certainly welcome those comments, but I think it's fair that everybody gets the same amount of time.
Thank you for timing.
I was going to say the same thing. It's not an equitable process when somebody writes a letter to be read by staff and goes way over the three-minute mark.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss that further for any future emails that come in. We may have to just cut off the reading at the three-minute part, point. Sorry. We're going to move on now to ordinances requiring a second reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising salary ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Oh, moved.
Did you get a second? Okay. Any public hearing?
You'll need to raise your hand if you want to. I noticed, Mr. Spool, you had your hand up, but that was predated our ordinance discussion. Can you, I'll call on you.
But I'm. It can only be on this.
I'll just be advised, if it's not regarding the salary ordinance, you'll have to save your comments. Mr. Spool, are you looking to comment on the ordinance in question?
I'd like a chance to talk during the second open meeting to get my question answered, which wasn't answered.
Well, then.
Fine, we'll call on you then.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Will you raise your hand at that time? Sorry, I didn't mean to, I thought you, I apologize for that. I don't see any other hands raised at this time here.
Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Oh, moved.
Most, excuse me, motion to adopt or reject? Roll call.
Roll call, okay. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to the ordinances requiring a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of ordinance amending the Highland Park Borough Code regarding fair share affordable housing to address the requirements of the New Jersey Superior Court for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending certain sections of Chapter 86 entitled Fair Share Affordable Housing of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park to address the requirements in the New Jersey Superior Court has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the ordinance amending the Highland Park Borough Code pursuant to NJSA 40:55D through 53 regarding land development performance, maintenance, and related guarantees for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance amending the Highland Park Borough Code pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-53 regarding land development performance, maintenance, and related guarantees has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt items 14 through 14K?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George? Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Moving on to resolutions that require a separate reading. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve budget transfers?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation for coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
I am appointing Ms. Christie Van Horn to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, last time, Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Christie Van Horn has been actually sitting on the committee for a while. She's doing excellent work. She's actually the chairperson of the Reorganization Committee for STAC. She's doing an excellent job. Joan, thank you for this, your last roll call.
Councilman Hale?
If I don't vote, does that mean you have to stay around?
She'll be after you for that one.
All right, yes. Bye, Joan.
Thank you. Councilmember Hirsch? He's in front of me.
Yes.
Okay. We're about to enter our second public participation. Three minutes are allotted for each speaker. I'm going to ask that we watch the time. And a speaker can speak on any topic. This is all subject to a 9:00 PM conclusion prior to the work session. So Borough Administrator, do we have any hands up?
Yes, Mayor, we have 12 attendees, one hand up, and it is Peter Spool.
Okay, Peter.
Confirm it to you.
Peter Spool, 146 Graham Street. So first, I would like an answer to the question about Track D. Why does it make sense to issue an RFP and pay for all these costs for a piece of property that's privately owned? And then I have another question. Go ahead.
Okay, so the Borough Council and the administration have deemed it necessary for us to explore the possibility of a parking garage so that the sidewalks in front of the redevelopment projects remain safe for all our pedestrians. And that is pretty much where we are.
Okay, thank you. So here's my other point. The redevelopment plan that was sometimes described by its developers as a vision is rather vague in many cases. You received some notes from Main Street Highland Park about Track C and some other choices for locations of the farmer's market. They went to much more trouble to provide very detailed plans for how that could work out and what parts of the current Track C could have buildings on them and still provide enough space for the farmer's market and the current town square. And their recommendation was that Track C remain the location for those. That was their first choice. I would like to know if you'll honor their choice.
I'm, I don't know where you're getting the information that you're giving right now, Peter, but we have been talking with Main Street all along. They have worked out a detailed plan for the farmer's market moving to South Third Avenue, as we've been discussing. So I'm not quite sure when you say they.
So let me, let me, let me cut you off so I can.
No, 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 please don't, please don't take the effort.
You're not giving an accurate answer. They provided you three choices. They provided you with information.
Excuse me, Peter.
I did silence him just so you could speak, Mayor, just so you know.
Okay, Peter. We're all in this together. I'm not fighting you on things that you may perceive as differently from the way we perceive them. I am telling you the truth when I tell you we have intimately involved Main Street Highland Park in our discussions. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, sorry, let me sort my hands, Mayor. Next I have up is a phone number ending in 6708. So if you could tell us your name and address, please. And you'll have to unmute yourself. Hello?
Hi, my name is John Buco. I live in Somerset right now, but I was raised in.
I'm sorry, could you, I'm sorry, could you please state your name, spell it, and give us your address?
John Buco, 41 Byron Place, Somerset, New Jersey.
Okay.
Yeah, my phone, yeah, I live in Somerset. And like I said, my name's John Buco. I lived in Highland Park for 45 years. I went to high school, middle school, all the schools there. I'm a member of the 1977 and 78 Highland Park Owls Football Championship Team, by the way. And I've been following what you guys have been doing over the last couple of months. And I don't think I'm really on to what you're doing. I'm, and I'm totally against what you guys are doing with the pot in Hot Town. I do not agree with any of this at all. I listened to the meetings and I applaud the residents who have spoken up against it. You know, nobody wants marijuana businesses in Highland Park except a few. And I hope that they will continue fighting this and keep Highland Park safe and family friendly, since it doesn't seem to me that the council really seems to care about that. And I'm also really sorry to see Highland Park go this way. Because I was actually planning on moving back. But if I want to stay in a town with, you know, it's filled with pot stores, I can just continue to live in Franklin, the Somerset area that I live in now. And the point I would like also to make is I know that you think you're going to make a lot of extra money with the pot stores coming in or the lounges. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but one way the town might make more money in the long run is that the Highland Park taxpayers would not be paying the health insurance for Mayor Mittler and Councilwoman Foster. They, I found out through Oprah that that is happening. And none of the other council members are getting their healthcare paid for. So I think the town would save a lot of money if those two council people would be paying their own health insurance. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Okay, so just to clarify, the state of New Jersey allowed for health insurance coverage for mayor and council until several years ago. And anyone who was getting coverage was grandfathered in. But I do want it to be clear that it's not 100% paid for. Okay, any other hands, Terry?
I see we have 10 minutes till nine, and I see two hands remaining. Looks like Carl Prey and/or Mary Forsberg. Just state your name and address, please.
Mary Forsberg, 317 Dennison Street. I'm back to supporting Peter Spool on his questions. I've read the thing that Main Street wrote. They gave three scenarios, but the one that they preferred was to keep the farmer's market on Track C, not move it and not, you know, not put it in front of a parking garage. And honestly, the fact, Mayor, that you would say that you want to build a parking garage to make this town safer for people who walk, well, what about the 300 or 500 cars from your three-to-five-story parking garage that you will be building in a residential neighborhood? What about, what about what those cars are going to do? I mean, that's, that's one block away from where the four people have gotten here. Quite frankly, I don't think turning left on Raritan Avenue from North Third is really going to make a big difference. I would like to know how you issue an RFP for private property? How do you keep an individual who owns a piece of property from building what they want on it? How do you tell him or her that they have to build a parking garage? I mean, I don't know whether Jim Polos wants to build a parking garage, but I do, I have seen the, I have heard all of the rumors about him getting a new restaurant to end the Blue Horse with a 10-year lease. And I don't understand why you feel like you can steamroll over everybody in this town. I mean, Dan Stern Cardinal said a lot of people have a lot of opinions. Well, that's true. I don't agree with pretty much anything that he has to say. But I do know that many people don't want a parking garage. People don't want meters. People do not want to pay for a parking garage in this town. And if you try to do a private-public partnership, I'd like to know who you're going to do that partnership with because if you do it with the MCI, you've got a problem there because of Jim Polos's position there. I think you are so far over your heads on this. I do not think you know what you're doing. And I see you, I see you, Gail, kind of rolling your head and rolling your eyes and.
Because, Mary, Mary, we've worked on so many things together for so many years.
We have you and I?
Oh, yes, since 2000.
Thirty seconds.
And, and I want, I just want to make it clear that this Borough Council and their profession. that this Borough Council and their professionals are not stupid. There, there are certainly things, change is hard. Change is always hard, but we have to, change has to happen for us to move forward into this twenty-first century and to improve the quality of life here in Highland Park. You and I may disagree on certain things, and that's perfectly fine. But to insinuate that we don't know what we're doing is really unfair. Thank you.
I see three hands, Mayor. Looks like Dan Stern Cardinal is next.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty-one Harper Street. Just wanted to, since it came up, just wanted to say thank you for your work on the cannabis resolution from a couple of months ago. A lot of towns right now, I know Princeton's in the middle of having a big fight over the same kind of thing. So great, we're getting Highland Park kind of out in front of that issue. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, one second. Looks like Alvin Chin is next. Please state your name and address.
Alvin Chin, thirty-one South Third. I'd like to echo the comment Daniel made just a moment ago about the cannabis. And I'd also like to say about, speak about something that's not redevelopment for a second. The Hazard Mitigation Plan for Middlesex County is due this month. And the council has an opportunity, I believe, to look over the document tonight in their working session and to, to vote on it later this month. And I encourage the council to approve this, because there's not only eligibility for federal funding at stake for the borough, but for the whole county. So let's get this done and passed. Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else?
I do see one hand. Harold Sakowitz. State your name and address, please.
Harold Sakowitz, six seventeen South Fifth Avenue. This will actually be quick this time. Do we, are we guaranteed to be able to close Third? Third, South Third? Are we, is that definite that we can close that?
So we are in discussions, you mean permanently closing, correct?
Right.
We are in discussions with the D O T on that, because they own Route twenty-seven, which intersects South Third.
Okay, so, will that interfere with our plans if we can't do it? With the redevelopment at all?
Um, so we, I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to think about us not being able to do it. This is a, this is a trend in municipalities throughout the state. There are many other towns that have been closing off some streets to allow for public gathering spaces. So, yeah, I'm not, you know, I, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I'm clearly not at a point where I'm ready to say this is not going to happen. It's been allowed in many other municipalities. And Borough Administrator has been working closely with members of the D O T on this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, Mayor, I don't see any other hands. Oh, well, I think that's just a random. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're managed to stick the landing there.
Okay, so we're ready, we're about to go into our work session with the Borough Council, like a five-minute recess beforehand. Yes, no?
Ready to go.
Okay, everybody ready to go? Okay, so let's move on then. We have several work session items for this evening. First. Terry, would you like to discuss Middlesex County's multi-jurisdictional all-hazard mitigation plan?
How's that for a title? And Alvin Chin gave us a segue with his comments just now. I will thank Alvin, because actually, part of my intro to this is to tell you a little bit about this project. This is a plan that gets updated every six years. The county contracted with Rutgers University. Alvin's one of the folks at Rutgers that has been helping finish this project out with us and has been working, pulling together basically the municipal appendices to the plan. And what we did do, and this was convened, the first meeting kind of convened before COVID was something we ever thought about. And then COVID happened. And, or I guess it was early days of COVID. And it started and it got a little bit delayed because of that and a couple of their technical issues. But we now have a draft of the plan, which I'll be distributing. Actually, Alvin sent me the fancy polished-up version without the, with all the paginations correct. We'll have, fortunately, we have two of our kind of relevant committees meeting next week. Public Safety on Tuesday and Public Works on Thursday. But essentially, the plan gives an overview of some of the hazards in Highland Park specifically. The chapter we were assigned was really focused on our issues. We reviewed prior action items that were identified as well as new ones. Kind of the disclaimer that I would make is the bulk of the work, and we do have a small task force of relevant staff members as well as O E M Coordinator, our Environmental Commission, and I'm sure I'm forgetting someone else, that gave input on this along the way. But we didn't have, I wouldn't, I haven't used the word benefit, but kind of the Ida experience fresh in mind when we did a lot of the work. There's still a lot of very relevant mitigation actions that you'll see in there. However, what I've been working on, subsequent to Ida, is getting, securing us the technical assistance to really do a more comprehensive hazard assessment with some help from the N J D E P and some other folks at Rutgers, hopefully, if I can pull that off. But, but to basically inform this plan, because the good news is this plan is a living document. They actually want you to revisit it annually. So as we have better information, as we have better projects in mind, we can incorporate those into the plan. As Alvin also indicated, an important component, FEMA, looks for this plan to be in place for both the county and the localities in order to award future funding for mitigation projects in Highland Park. A lot of them would be flood-related most likely and maybe power-related. So I wasn't planning on going through the weeds of the plan, because that you'll have in your inbox tomorrow. But it is something that we do have to take action on in this calendar year. And just unfortunately, the way the timing worked with this project, it came late in the year. But I do feel really good about the draft. I do also feel confident that we will have to make changes as we have better information on the draft. But in the meantime, you'll have it, and you'll be able to give me any comments that you might have. But we will want to put a resolution on with Mayor's permission for the next, the final meeting of the year on the twenty-first, so that we can have all, you know, do our part for the county as well.
Thank you.
So that's awesome. Just look for that, and then we'll have those various committee meetings. Those of you not on those other committees, we can, we can find time to catch up on that as well.
Thank you. Okay, Stephanie, a revow order. Do you want to talk to that?
Yes, so I think the Clerk's Office sent out the revow order that came from the County Tax Board last month. We are, so we, we're under order. It has to be completed by November of twenty-twenty-two for the twenty-twenty-three tax year. Finance did meet with Tom, our tax assessor, this past Friday to start just discussing this whole process. It's, it's gonna be a long, lengthy process. We, he's looking to get in over eighty-five percent of Highland Park, getting into those homes when we go out, when we hire a company. That's his goal that he's looking for. Also, and Councilman Hale, jump in if I'm missing anything as well, too. What else? The, the card, our, what is that, the property record card or the home card? Yes, so the property record card, if you, let me back up. So is the car, is that the annual tax card that residents receive every year? That card, the amount that's on there should be about, your taxes should be about forty percent of that number that's on there. So if, if it's not, I would suggest you send an email to the tax assessor office requesting your property record card. I did, and I can tell you, I was not happy at what I discovered in the, just a lot of things there. But I would suggest residents to be prepared for it. Please, as we go into this for next year, if you receive notifications, door hangers, please open your doors and schedule appointment with the companies that we will be putting the R F Q out for. Is there anything else?
I would just like to add something to, to your comments, Stephanie. So revow, you know, could, sounds scary. But in some cases, it doesn't always mean that your taxes on your individual home will increase. In Highland Park, it's been decades since we actually had a revaluation. And there are many apartment complexes that are undervaluated, meaning that the individual homeowners are paying more than their fair share of the taxes. And what the revow will do will bring all of the different types of properties in Highland Park more in sync with what their actual values are in twenty-twenty-two. So I know that, having spoken to some residents who fear the word revow, I, you know, we don't know exactly what each house is going to see. But people should not start panicking that their individual home taxes may increase. They may not. Okay, so just, you know, it's, it's all the properties in Highland Park pulled together. Councilman Hale?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, it was a very informative meeting that we had with the, with the assessor. I learned quite a bit. And, and, you know, I mean, this is going to take an enormous amount of communication between us and, and to the residents about how the process works and, and what the potential outcomes of this process are. It's a very complicated process with a lot of moving parts. But it is, it is, is something that every town has to go through. It's every town that, that has. You know, one of the things that I've held on to, or one of the things that, 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 that I, in, in general, the idea is that about a third of the people have their property taxes reduced, about a third, nothing happens, and about a third, they go up, right? And that, that's, that's not a, you know, rough, that, that's not a specific or scientific number, but that's, you know, sort of a baseline. I really think that as a council and, and, and working with the administration, that the, the primary focus to do with it is, is developing and working very much on a communication plan about, about how this process works and, and what's coming. As I said, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts. And I would just suggest that we sort of prioritize making sure that we're open and transparent about what's coming, that, you know, that, and, and having said that, I guarantee you that there will be people who are, who are not happy with this. And, and, and that's just the, the nature of this. As the mayor said, this hasn't been done in a very, very long time, and so we don't have a lot of experience with it. But I think we really need to focus on the, the communication part of it. And I know Terry does that. I know Stephanie does that. And I just want to let the other council member know that, that that's, that's a real big part of this. Stephanie mentioned the property records card. I also did it. And it was wrong. The card that is on my house does not, is not what my house is. And as a result, I'm most likely probably underpaying taxes. I also learned that in nineteen ninety, the last time that this happened, the person who owned the house didn't let the person in. So, you know, that was, that was long before I, you know, owned the house. And so I would encourage everyone to get this property records, not, not, you know, just to, to make sure that you understand what, what your house says it has. Like, the biggest example is my house has, according to the property records, has one full bath, one half bath, and one quarter bath. That's not true. And, and so, so we, you know.
I didn't want to put mine out there, but. Mine isn't true either, but it's scaring my husband to say the least.
So it's, it's, you know, it's just, it's, you know, we'll, we'll work more on the communication. You know, the, the borough is not looking to go back to get, you know, back taxes or anything like that. It's all about moving forward. So, you know, that's, that's important to recognize. But, you know, I think, I think that, that we really need to focus on this as a communication issue to make sure that we are as transparent and open, because there's, there's, there's nothing that, you know, there's formulas and there's company that, that will, will produce answers. We just have to make sure that we do everything we can to let people know what the process is, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Tara?
And residents, like, specifically request that their property be done? Because I know quite a few people in the triangle who their property is listed as a double lot, and you can't put two houses on there, and I'm sure they're paying more than they should be. So can they, like, a resident call and say, please come do my house?
Borough Administrator, do you want to respond?
Everybody, I think the goal is to get into a hundred percent of the homes and properties in Highland Park. That's the best. Realistically speaking, there's going to be logistical issues, whatever. So our assessors put forth a goal of eighty-five percent, which will give us very good data to base our, our values on in the various sectors. So absolutely, if anybody wants to be revowed, we'll get a revow. There's not even, don't even request it. It's coming your way. That said, if someone ever feels they're over-assessed, they can reach out to the assessor, and he will look at that situation. But on the flip side, you know, there's a lot of rules and regs about how, what governs the value of the property. So, but anyway, I just want to make that very clear. The goal is a hundred percent. The reality is more likely to be more like eighty-five to ninety.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hirsch, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I, I did want to echo something that you said regarding the undervaluation of some of our large garden apartments. And just assure anybody watching that that is very much on the radar, and we don't want to have a situation where a majority of our tenants and, of our residents in Highland Park, who are renters, find themselves shouldering the burden of, of, of an increased tax assessment. So that's going to be a really important kind of two-pronged process. Also, I, I do just want to, I, I'm worried a little bit about the information, kind of. It's very loose. This is a loose discussion. I understand that's the point of this discussion. But, you know, this is the last thing that we want any misconceptions of that. So, I mean, I, I would recommend that the borough really just be out in front, ideally before this discussion, just kind of what the process is, why it happens, who's affected, examples from other towns, you know, and what is being asked of the borough. Because, you know, if somebody catches this, you know, I'd be freaking out, too. I don't even know what a quarter bathroom is. But, you know, I'd be freaking out.
Part of the reason we wanted to bring it up to the work session, Matt, is so that we could let the council members know that the communication process is the priority. And communicating it as loudly as we can, that we are developing a communication process to answer all of those questions. That's the priority.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I appreciate that, but it's just, you know, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't even hired the company yet, but we want Highland Park to know they were one of the towns that were ordered last month by one of, it was many other Middlesex boroughs, I believe, that's under order as well, too. So, you know, information is out there. We need to discuss it here in our work session, too, as we move forward, that everyone should be letting everyone know in their committees, their neighborhoods, that this is, this is happening, and please open.
I can't ask, I, I can't answer any questions, though, until I have the information, though. So I'm just, I, I, that, that was kind of. I can't ask, I, I can't answer any questions, though, until I have the information. And so I'm just, I, I, that, that was kind of, I, I, I appreciate this being on the agenda. But I did just want to, you know, I, you know, we just need to have the kind of basic F I Q. Um, and whatever resources and materials that the county might have, and I'm sure they do.
Uh, to. We'll, we'll get something out to all the council members. So you all understand what you're first.
Yeah, I obviously brought that up in the meeting, too, about us putting together F, uh, F I Q. Um, and Tom said there was some information out there, too, but wanted to kind of personalize the Highland Park.
Okay, Phil, is your hand raised?
Uh, yeah. I just, just briefly um, to add it on, I, I know it's just, uh, it's on because Councilwoman Kim Cho Han needs to tell us, you know, it's coming to. Uh, to get ready for it, but there is a lot of moving parts and they're very technical. And basically, if you're not in, you know, not, not an accountant, I guess, or someone who does real estate appraisals. You may not understand all the pieces of it. We just represented a town which we did it a couple of years ago. And their rate actually went down very slightly. Uh, their appraised value went up very slightly on a townwide basis. And they basically, their taxes went down about fifty dollars uh, townwide, the average. It's very complicated, but what, what happened was the town. Um, uh, actually had the appraiser, the appraisal company come in at several meetings and explain what they were going to do. How their people were going to go there. They also did is was just recommended a very detailed, but very understandable. Series of F I Qs right up on the front page of the borough for the entire year that it took. Also, just everybody know, it's an expensive process.
Right.
For the borough to get it done, but we already did a, a real jump on that because we got the county. To do the G I S mapping, because you have to do a new tax map. We got the county to do that last, uh, more than last year, I think it was. Uh, and save that very gigantic expense. And we also started the process early because we kind of figured it was coming. So just to let everyone know, we've tried to take the, you know, the best step that we can also to, to save taxpayer dollars on that as well. Uh, but, you know, I join everybody in saying, we need good F I Qs and we need a, an appraiser that's gonna come in and explain it at public meetings. And give us updates in the public meetings so the public could hear it.
Okay. Any other comments from the council on the um, revow order? Terry, do you happen to know offhand how many years it's been since we did have a revow?
I think I heard Matt say nineteen ninety. Is that what you read on, yeah?
No.
My, my conversation with Tom, it was nineteen ninety.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Twenty years.
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty years. Twenty twenty one.
Thirty years. Okay, let's move on to um, same day voter registration. Matt, you wanted to discuss that?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, to, there is a, a, a bill circulating in, in Trenton. Um, to allow for same day voter registration. Um, and, and as, as you're probably aware now, that if you're not registered to vote. Um, a certain period of time before the election, you're, you're not eligible to vote. There's, there's pretty strong evidence that, that, that the registration requirements um, are, are punitive, particularly for. Um, lower income and, and communities of color and people of color, and, and they hurt them more than, than, than uh, uh, disproportionately. And I just think that it's something that, that, that the borough ought to um, support. I think it's a, it, it, if it passes, it'll be a state law that passes it. But I think that um, a resolution of support from, from Highland Park um, to uh, to support same day voter registration. Um, specifically the two bills. Um, I think that there's a, a draft of the, of, of, of a, of a resolution. It's a very simple resolution in support of the bills um, that I, I hope we can introduce um, uh, shortly. Um, it just seems to me like in a, in a town where we encourage voting, encourage discussion, encourage. Um, as much civic participation as we do in Highland Park, that um, doing everything we can to get people, um, the ability to vote. Um, is, is, uh, is certainly an important thing, so.
Yeah.
I, 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 I hope we can, we can move forward on that. I, and, and happy to, to discuss or have any questions or anything like that. But it seems to me like it's a pretty uh, straightforward um, support.
I think it's a, it's an important piece of legislation that we should be supporting. And um, I have a, a copy of that, uh, of a proposed resolution. So let's um. Terry and Joan, let's make sure we get something on the agenda for the next meeting to vote on this.
Well, and, and if the council has any questions about it, or if there's any discussion about it, now would be a good time to sort of make sure. I, I think we're all, most likely on the same page. I just want to make sure that we move forward on it as fast as we can.
Could we get the resolution form circulated early? Because I've, I've had some people ask about it, too, want to, you know, know what it's about. Um, I'm definitely in favor of it, but the people are, you know, want to know specifically because. Other voter issues in other states are, are there, so they're wondering, does it tie into any of that? I don't think it does. It's just New Jersey, but just for information purposes.
Yep.
Okay, and um, to, to help the process along, Terry, we should schedule um, an admin committee meeting. So we can uh.
We have one already on the books. Uh, we do the, you know, right after the agenda meeting, uh, so in about a week.
Okay, so let's make sure I get you a copy of the resolution.
And I'll put it, I'll put it on my little cheat sheet for what we're supposed to talk about there.
Okay, um, Matt, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to add that there are just, just for context purposes, that there are twenty other states that do allow for same day voter registration. New Jersey is not one of them. Uh, so I agree, it's time for New Jersey to enter the twenty first century. Uh, you know, really be anti-Chim Crow that is, you know, taking over parts of the country right now and to move forward. With this and to encourage our legislators to get this done.
Okay. All right, any other um, discussion about this?
No.
Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, so moved. Feel better, Mayor?
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Joan.
For everything, Joan. Thanks, Joan.
Joan, 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 Joan.
At the next meeting.
Thanks, Joan.
Bye-bye.
Hi, everybody.